All right. Good evening. This is a meeting of the Education Committee and Board of Education and Long Hill Administration. My name is Tom Whitmire, and I'll be chairing the meeting this evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:33. And if you could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
We're going to start with the Education Committee. It's Thomas Whitmore.
Here.
Joanne Glasser Orenstein.
Here.
Lisa Valente. David. Kevin Shively. Donna Sodell. Lori Rososco Schwartz.
Here.
Michael Miller.
Here.
Carl Mustaro.
Here.
Now, what it's lying through it.
Okay, I'm going to do the Board of Members. Listen to Tim Finelli.
Here.
Tom Gallo.
It's the Finance Committee, Margaret. It would be Scott Care and Jackie Norseal.
Just the three of you?
Yes, it's the Finance Committee.
Thank you very much.
Lucinda. I know, Mike, but it's the Finance Committee.
I know.
Okay. Thank you.
We're going to start again. Lucinda Tim Finelli.
Here.
Jackie Norseal. And Scott Kerr.
Here.
I saw Jackie earlier, but I don't hear her. Okay.
She'll be here. Maybe she needs to unmute.
She's in as a participant over here.
Okay.
There she is.
Okay, very good. There she is.
She got her good.
All right. Good evening. I would like to welcome Dr. Semmel, Mr. Hendrickson, our Business Manager, members of the Board of Education and Board of Education Finance Committee, TC Chairman Don Contafio, Board of Finance Chairwoman Lani McHugh, and members of the Town Council Education Committee. I'd also like to welcome those community members watching from home, and thank you for taking time to be a part of this process. We're going to start tonight with a message from Mrs. Tim Finelli. Please take the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. First of all, I want to thank the Town Council for this first opportunity to actually speak with Mr. Chentapanni. Our Finance Committee is here, which is Jackie Norseal, Scott Care, and myself, and I'd like to say a few words. The Board of Ed is a complex organization with many components that are fluid based on the needs and demands of our students. Budgeting processes for all general and special education are different from the realities that unfold during the school year. We service and employ human beings, thus are subject to vicissitudes that come along with human dynamics. As we digest and analyze the report, we are committed to ensuring appropriate controls are in place. When we are informed, we always act. This review brought to light areas of concern. Presently, our Superintendent and our Business Director are in the process of addressing issues. Some they have already addressed and will continue to implement recommendations in a prioritized order. We understand the value and importance to follow accepted accounting procedures and principles, as already noted, and intend to embrace the recommendations. In retrospect, we would have hoped that if town auditors recognized any concerns, that they would identify them for us so we could have been able to address them. Our focus moving on will be moving forward to ensure that controls and lucidity in our financial systems. And I want again, thank you for letting us being able to speak to Mr. Chentapanni. I know that we sent in questions, and we look forward to hearing from him. So thank you very much, Tom.
All right. Thank you, Lucinda. Tonight's meeting is an opportunity for the School Administration Board of Ed to hear a presentation of the Executive Summary of the Operational Review by PKF O'Connor Davies. We welcome Mr. Joseph Centafanti as our guest presenter. When he is done, I will be asking some of the questions that the Board of Ed did send for him. Please keep in mind that we're here to discuss the findings of the report. This report is an operational review and not an audit in the truest sense of the word. Audits can come in many different forms. This report finds operational and financial policies and procedures as they are practiced in the Trumbull Public Schools recommendations for improvements in financial responsibility, transparency, and best practices. This committee comes here tonight with the intent to work together with the Board of Education and School Administration to correct some of the alarming issues concerning the past finances of the Trumbull Public Schools. As you're aware, a little more than a year ago, our interim superintendent noted that the budget was overspent by more than $1 million. The unfortunate pandemic that we are living with today provided the school system an opportunity to save funding while our schools were closed in the spring, and the budget was somewhat rectified by the end of the fiscal year. We have stated repeatedly in our meetings and in the media that there is no evidence of malfeasance or criminality in the findings of this report. This committee is not here to point blame at anyone. Our current administration arrived here in mid-September of 2020 and has no role or responsibility in any of these findings. The committee believes there is a need for improved communication in a budget process that requests two-thirds of our total annual town budget. This report has been long overdue. I commend the Town Council for taking the initiative to call for a review. As the Chairman of this committee, I ask each of you to not feel defensive over the report, but to embrace it and to join us in the study of best practices and make suitable decisions in the months moving forward. I'm very pleased to hear that Dr. Semmel and Mr. Hendrickson have already put several of these recommendations from the Operational Review in place, and I enthusiastically encourage more collaboration to discuss additional recommendations that would be fitting to keep the Trumbull Public School system fiscally strong and transparent in the future. Thank you. I'd like to now introduce Mr. Centafanti, an auditor with PKF O'Connor Davies with to present his report. This is the summary of the executive, an overview of the executive summary. Mr. Centafanti.
Hello, everybody. So just start talk about the process a little bit. So basically, the review and the procedures that were performed were based upon the scope that was developed by the town. And so the process started with requests of documents, various information, financial and non-financial. There were some, obviously, looking at the report, there was a lot of financial analysis that was done. There was discussions with management, you know, ahead of doing some of this, just getting an understanding of of some of the things that were mentioned about the budget being in deficit and that type of thing. When I did start this project, we did interviews of over over 10 employees of between HR and payroll and the superintendent, the business manager, assistant business manager, and all the functional areas. Certain areas based upon the scope, we did some detailed transaction testing to get an understanding of how things flowed and to address some of the scope. And then finally, there was a follow-up along the way to confirm our understanding, you know, based upon our interviews or testing and that type of thing. So looking at the executive summary, it starts on page three. The first is the budget development. Again, this is specifically part of the scope to kind of look at the budget and the support and I guess to understand how it was developed and where things might be improved. So when you look at budget support that was available, so again, we requested information in some cases, and you see in the report that the information wasn't wasn't available or wasn't. So that's identified as far as what support we looked at versus what support that we might not have. Did look at the budget methodology as far as how the budget develop, we'll say use of credits in the budget such as employee contributions or expected retirements, that type of thing. You look at transfers were appropriate, and we did look at some of the budget history to understand. Since we looked at a three-year period, we did some trend analysis to see where budgets, what the budgets and actual were over that period of time. If you look at some of the general ledger accounting, and you know, one of the big projects was looking at the energy performance contract, the loans from Bank of America. So that led into some of the accounting recommendations as far as properly recording that in a cap project fund and some of the issues around issuing debt and the best practices and statutes related to that. We also looked at special revenue funds as far as the activity, what was in special revenue funds. So looking at big picture, it was recommended that they be monitored for over expenditure, you know, to make sure that the monies were not spent in excess of either the fund balance or court your activity. And then recommendation to kind of look at some of the funds that are in deficit position, how to solve some of those, and some of those were solved in 2020, but there are still other ones that need to be addressed. We did look at financial software, we're looking at munist utilization. We did look at system rights and had some recommendations there that they be reviewed to make sure that employees only had the maximum rights they needed to complete their assigned duties and not have it write southern modules that they might not actually work with. And we did look at observation with respect to potential recommendation to kind of revise the chart of accounts to kind of more align with some of the accounting and some of the things that are being done, such as the payments of that that service for some of those loans are in equipment accounts and various other areas versus kind of being segregated. So it'd be clear what the budget was for and that you had the right amounts. We also, as part of, you know, again, those interviews pretty much interviewed everyone in the finance department to get an understanding of internal controls. The most significant areas that we think need attention is the lack of segregation duties in the payroll and human resource area. So in addition to that, you're only having one person in payroll. So it's something that we noted also to look at resources that are now to segregate, but so you would have a backup if necessary. We did look at, again, the purchasing based upon some of the transaction testing that we did and the bidding process and how that's documented. And then we did also note the recording of cash receipts and billing. In certain cases, revenues are being recorded based upon the amount received versus being recorded as far as what you did receive and then make sure or what you collected and then make sure you follow it. This is just a critical control and other communities have been issues with this. So this is something that is an important control is to make sure we have an expectation of what should be hitting the bank versus what recording with cash receipts based upon what actually did hit the bank. We did look at a couple of compliance areas, the budget transfers, the purchasing area, and then the issuance of debt as far as compliance. We have recommendations to address those areas as far as putting in procedures and and monitoring and for the debt, just to kind of be in compliance with state statutes and getting the town involved in that approval process. So what's been asked a couple of times, so I'm going to kind of answer it now and then certainly can have a follow-up question is the most significant areas that need to be addressed. And the first area would be the internal control recommendations of the lack of segregation duties and payroll and the cash received. I'd say are the two most critical areas to kind of address first so that we have the right controls in place. The second area is the special revenue funds, the overspending that has occurred in some of those funds. And then what is the plan to fund those deficits? Third area would be the budget, the support. Yeah, I realize that I looked at a budget that was done two finance structures ago. So my evaluation was based upon what I received for 18, 19, and 20, and there was a 21 budget, and now there's a 22 budget. But so these were observations based upon the information that I had. So certain areas, I think the support could be a little bit more detailed. I think position control, looking at some of those records as far as budget management, as was mentioned. Board of Ed is a very dynamic operation, especially one as large as Trumbull, and things change all the time. So just having a system to kind of manage that process and know what's already been committed. And then I talked about the, some of the accounts kind of maybe just budgeting more in accordance with the standard chart of accounts where that service would be kind of clearly budgeted versus being part of other equipment accounts or that type of thing. And then the fourth area is just the compliance purchasing is just more the value there is from efficiency standpoint and then transfers. And then the whole debt process, which again has been talked about quite a bit. So those are out of the recommendations, those are the four areas I think are, you know, would be if I had to prioritize where I would recommend that the districts are, they haven't addressed some of them already. So that's my overview of the significant areas as far as executive summary.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Centafanti. Mrs. Tim Finelli had sent other questions as well. Some of them are a little bit redundant from what we've heard and seen in previous meetings. And just for the, you know, saving some time here, I do want to, one concern was about several typos and maybe some errors in the report. I want everyone to know that I have asked Mr. Centafani to send that back to have a second proof and to to repair those things and fix the typos and things so that that would be done and a new report would be drafted with those changes. So that has been already established. Just because I think they would like you to say this or make an official statement. Did you uncover, Mr. Centafani, did you uncover any evidence of malfeasance or misappropriation for the years covered by this review?
No, nothing like that was noted in any of the testing or interviews or any of the other work that we did.
Okay, thank you. And a lot of us get hung up between the word audit, operational review, you're an auditor. Could you sort of list a couple of the significant distinctions between the work that you did and what other people might expect of an actual audit?
I think, you know, again, being from an auditor's perspective, normally there's an opinion at the end, and our opinion, this this is okay, or this is not okay, or that type of thing. The operational review is more focused on we'll say the internal controls and policies and procedures and how things are done, and even some, in some cases, efficiency. So there are, there were some based upon the scope, we'll call them audit procedures such as looking at invoices and charges, the budgetary accounts and those type of things. But at the end, the review is more generating recommendations than it is the specific numbers, okay, or the specific fund is okay or that type of thing. So it's more focused on, again, the policies and procedures and operations than saying that this balance sheet we audited it, and it's fairly stated.
Thank you. There were several recommendations regarding tracking hires, terminations, salaries, and that. Can you explain how the district was counting its full-time equivalent employees, its FTEs? Or was there a process?
Yeah, I didn't look at FTEs. I guess the process that I looked at was the new hires and terminations and that monitoring, just trying to understand how how that process was. I think that was specific in the scope. I didn't look at FTEs from that standpoint. It was more just what does the system look like to manage the salary line? So is there enough data to say we hired these people? And this is, this is how they're going to be funded. So it's more from looking at that process. You know, the position control and management of the salaries than it was looking at the actual number of people.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to open this up for a few questions maybe I did not cover from the Finance Committee or from our administrators, and I do respectfully request that you keep it to the findings in the report. Does anybody?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Shively.
This is Kevin Shively. I just had a follow-up question to the last question that you asked regarding FTEs and as I understood it, and maybe you can help me understand if I'm reading this correctly. It's not necessarily, what you're saying is not necessarily about the number of FTEs or a number of hires and things. But I believe you did look at how the the staff or the employee count was where those salaries and figures were being accounted for. Did you not? Was that part of your assessment?
Yeah, they looked, it's a good, again.
Where in the books I'm talking about in the county, you know, they were counted for?
In the book. Yeah, it was, well, I looked at salaries in total and then just looked at what records human resources had that would that would show again the best practice of managing that. I started with $80 million in salaries, and this one's terminated. I replaced them with this. Just kind of managing that process to salaries is one of the main objects as far as in the budget so that you know, if that line went over, that we're expecting you to have to transfer from somewhere else. So I looked at it from that perspective for that specific area.
And again, through the chair, did you uncover any concerns that you had as far as where those those figures are being accounted for in terms of the accounting?
Well, I just, what we did know was that the records were just, they weren't complete, let's say with the salary debt.
What do you mean by not complete? I mean, can you explain that a little bit further?
So not every person was the salary filled in as far as if there was a new hire or if it was terminated. In some cases, the positions were there. But there wasn't the salary amount. So if we're going to evaluate again, we started with $80 million in salary, and here's what's changing. All the salary amounts were not filled in on this particular spreadsheet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions from the Finance Committee? Or our administrators?
Yes, Joe, on pages 64 and 65, you discuss allocations of costs to the lunch program. I'm unfamiliar in the previous districts of allocating operating cost lunch program. In your experience, how common is this?
It's definitely less common now. They will say 25 years ago, there were probably more costs allocated. But I don't normally see a charge for the outside employee benefits. So for telephone and, you know, financial support, that is not not common in my experience. No.
Okay, thank you. Then also on page 83, you recommended budgeting for vested sick time. Is there a methodology that you would recommend to do that due to the unpredictability of retirements, resignations, et cetera, that we can follow going forward?
Yeah, like you said, that's, you know, and I'm not sure the district specific protocol, a lot of districts, union contracts require one year's notice. I'm not sure in place there, you know, that usually allows you then to budget. I guess that was pointed why some of the contracts might require a one-year notice. But I think, you know, at least budgeting something because right currently, nothing was was being budgeted. It was just charged retirement payments. Why? When you had to pay them, but there wasn't so year, even just something would okay, clear.
This is Scott Care from the Board of Ed Finance Committee. First of all, Mr. Centafani, I want to thank you for coming back. I know you did one of these meetings already. I appreciate that. I also appreciate your prioritized list, the big buckets of work that you think are here. I think that'll be helpful to us as we implement these changes. So I appreciate that. Returning to the lunch program for a minute because it's obviously been an area of concern for a lot of us in the town and on the Board of Ed. Could you point us, having looked at, you know, seen a lot of different districts operating this way? Could you point us to a good role model, an exemplar, if you will, of what costs should be allocated to the lunch program? Not necessarily tonight, but like, could you follow up with something in that area? What are your thoughts on that?
I mean, the lunch program is, you know, it's created or it's allowable under state statutes. Basically, the statutes are saying that it has to has to relate to that program. So my discussion here was that one year or even the other, there really wasn't a calculation that supported the charge. And so it's more the support issue. So.
That was the 80, it was like $80,000 or something that you couldn't find backup for.
It was 80, and the more concerning one was a $200,000 one in that one year. So because the numbers weren't supported from a technical standpoint, cafeteria sales and the grants can only be used for cafeteria operations. So if it's not supported, then it just raises the question. Again, I didn't evaluate whether it was supported. There was no support that I was provided. So what is? So what, what is, what has happened over, we'll say, the past twenty years is, is because the costs have gone up and, and the different types of, uh, the state mandates, I want the lunches, changes the dynamic of what students order and that type of thing. So revenues have gone down. So what I have seen over the past twenty years is, is that less, even though they're direct costs, less direct costs and all these employee benefits, that's the biggest one, are not charged to the cafeteria program, but they're absorbed in the budget only because the cafeteria operations can't, can't afford it. So, um, you know, in theory, what, what, if you do accumulate some resources, you have a, a good program than that. A lot of times it was used towards, we'll say, capital replacement instead of having to replace the stove out of the budget or whatever, then it would be replaced there. But, you know, most of the cafeteria programs I see are, are pretty lean and, and this is pre-COVID and, and, you know, now, now it's a totally different situation. But so anything that relates to the operation certainly can be charged, but again, the trend has been less, less can be covered by the operations than, than years ago. So the fact that you're still charging employee benefits, you know, medical and all that, you're doing better than, than a lot of other communities.
So we'll take that as good news. That's great. Similarly, on the, um, the special revenue funds, um, I think, you know, we could all agree that those, uh, those should not be in, in deficit. Do you, do, do you have an opinion like if, if, if we come to the end of this year and we have a number that we're still in arrears? Do you, do you think it's inappropriate for us to develop a, uh, multi-year plan to solve that, um, deficit? Or is that something that we have to take care of immediately at like, at, at closing six thirty?
Yeah, I, I think it's okay to, to, to have a plan. I mean, that's normally what my recommendation is because once things are identified, it takes a little bit of time to react. I think the, we'll, we'll say the most immediate, uh, you know, we'll say for twenty-one is to make sure that no, none of those uh, funds for current year are overspent. So at least if operations in the current year are, are, are positive or at least break even and, and then the plan to address that. I think the recommendation said, look at some of the programs. It's either you need a fee increase or, or maybe it needs to be part of the budget if it's something important to the district and, and they want to continue to offer that. But I think a multi-year plan, uh, i- is fine and just, just making sure that current operations don't add to that.
Understood. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Care. Uh, any more questions?
Just gonna make a comment that for, uh, and this is Marty Semel, Superintendent of Schools. Uh, in terms of those special revenue accounts, you know, for twenty-one, uh, we're going to have to pay particular attention because in the twenty-one budget, there wasn't necessarily funds put into the twenty-one budget to ensure that there wouldn't be, uh, some decreases. So we'll have to, we're going to be managing our budget very tightly this year to make sure that there's not additional issues around those special revenue accounts, especially, uh, there's a, there's a couple of them that tend to be in deficit, but for twenty-two, we have budgeted to eliminate additional deficit spending in those areas, but we haven't budgeted to fill the hole that's currently there, that's been created. So just for a point of, of reference, that twenty-two budget that the Board of Education will be adopting in the near future, doesn't include filling that hole. So that would need either a special appropriation or we'd need to add additional funds to our budget in order to start doing that. So just, just for a point of clarification, at least from my perspective.
Yeah, that's a good point, Marty, and that's specifically why I asked about the multi, multi-year solution.
Right. I think it is. Obviously, it was a situation that's been created over years and, um, certainly it has to be a priority for us. If we end up finding some savings this year because of COVID, it's obviously an area that we're going to want to address. But I've been making it very clear that our food service account is, you know, over a million dollars probably projected in the hole uh, from this year, given, given the issues of, uh, we can't sell à la carte. There's a lot of reductions in what we've been able to sell in our food service program. So we are facing a serious issue in that, uh, that area. So a lot of our, a lot of our savings this year may have to go towards the food service program and not towards, uh, other areas. So I just want to point that out. But I did also want to just, uh, with Joe and, and Joe, thank you for the report. I, I think it's got a lot of great recommendations in there and I know it's going to take some time to, to really put all that into place and, and make sure that we've got good systems that do account for all that. One of the items that you mentioned and you put up high on your priorities is the segregation of duties. And I know one of your recommendations that was a payroll person should be, I think you said an open position that's in payroll should be filled. Now, we actually technically don't have an open position. It's not posted and it's not currently in the budget. So knowing that we don't have additional funds in our current twenty-twenty-one budget, but there's a high degree of need you're suggesting to segregate those duties. Do you have any thoughts about with our current population, how we could segregate the duties? I do understand your points about munis and reducing, um, their responsibilities to only the areas they need to. That's, that's something we, we certainly can do, but how about to the first part of the question?
All right, the, the biggest part of the segregation is the personal processes payroll can change employee rates. So that normally should be restricted to human resources only, where human resources would add the rates and then payroll would do their thing. So that's the critical control to kind of get in place. The, the position is more of a, you know, that wasn't recommended, that part wasn't recommended to segregate the du- duties. I think it was just an observation that was made to me that there used to be two people and that was more from a operational backup perspective because there was a concern by many people that if something happened to that payroll person, that you would have difficulty in getting payroll processed. So, so that would be the recommendation is more just to, to cross-train somebody to make sure you have that backup. It wouldn't necessarily need to be a new employee, but just that you had the cross-training here if, if it was necessary.
Great, thank you.
Um, if I can make a comment to that, to that point you brought up, Dr. Semel, um, does anyone on the board or, um, you know, anyone can speak to, if there used to be two positions, was, where would it show that one was just dropped? Um, for, you know, economic reasons, was the person that was there transferred to a different position? Um, that maybe would be better suited to bring back to the Board of Ed? So we're not necessarily adding to, uh, to, you know, budget and, and so forth and, and finding more salary. But where would that person may have gone if that's a possibility? And could they be brought back and be used in a more efficient manner? I don't know if anyone would, would know that. I think it's worth looking into.
And just to, that is worth looking into and, and, uh, I'm not sure we'll be able to get a great answer, but I, I can tell you that there's been additional reductions in secretarial staff at Long Hill. So there's been further reductions. So likely, like I know Special Ed used to have three people, um, managing all that. Now they're working with two. So, you know, there's been a significant increase in, in work over there. And as we know, is with Special Ed being so important and being so important in terms of paperwork and stuff, uh, that's where, when you start to limit the staff, that's where you can start running into issues because you just, you can't always be in crisis mode to complete work. So it could be hard to find someone who's already in the organization to be able to do this. But we'll, we'll have additional conversations. Currently, we put it into the budget because it was, from our perspective, a recommendation from, from the auditor to, to do that. So we could have the cross-trained payroll, be able to do some of these other items that were suggested in the recommendations.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, anyone from the Education Committee that has a question?
But Mr. Chair, um, if I understand correctly though, what I'm, what I'm hearing from this is not necessarily that it is a lack of personnel resources as much as a, an assignment of authority and duties with respect to payroll versus HR. I, I think, and Mr. Santifani, please correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think what I heard you saying was that, that it was really just not best practice to have the person processing the payroll have the authority to change the rates in, in essence, and that, that part should be cross-reference across and, and kind of doubled back on with an HR person that has that authority as opposed to a payroll person. Is that primarily what you were saying?
That's the internal control weakness is, is that aspect. You know, so that's where the recommendation is coming from, internal control perspective. The operational perspective is the other person that has a backup or, and again, I'm not sure the history or why there was two and, and, and now there's one. But I, I do, you know, in discussions, this was the, the workload to get it done with one person and was, was quite a bit. And then again, if something happened, that person couldn't do it, then what is, what is the backup? Is there someone in finance or, or I, so it was more just to take a look at that or just an observation from, from, from the conversations I had and, and from my experience that you just want to make sure you had a plan, who's going to do it if this person is unable to.
Thank you for that clarification.
So it's also important to note that the payroll person pays a thousand people every two weeks and about four hundred weekly. And so a qualified trained backup is required. It is, and that is why we are including in our budget. On page eighteen, uh, payroll condition four says payroll department currently has an open position and it recommends filling it. It would not be a full-time payroll position, but it's there also to augment other positions and the segregation of duties. And right now, we have five point seven five people in that department, myself included. And in this time of COVID, approximately the equivalent of one FTE is required to track all the COVID spent, related spending and application to the state for CRF funds. And all this at the, in the time of creating a budget and also and, and Dr. Semel and I are new to the district, understanding the procedures that we, that Trump, to make sure we're consistent with those.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrickson. That's actually very helpful. This is Kevin Shively again, just to, to, um, announce. But, uh, I, there was also one HR position that has been filled recently, has there not? Did I get that wrong or is there, was there an HR position that was filled? That was, that had been empty?
I couldn't speak to that. Uh, there has been nobody added in HR since I, I joined in mid-September.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, thank you for that, that as well.
And, and also, uh, when the payroll is set up at the start of the year, I was told that our payroll person sits down with HR and goes through the payroll in detail and to make sure that they both agree with the number of people on the payroll and the amount they're getting paid. It is a control procedure, it is a control, I, I would say deficiency, but I use that word loosely, that we should be tracking that. In my previous district, at the start of each year, I would go through the payroll and make sure the salary and the person matched up. And then on a, on a spot check basis, every payroll, take out a random number of people and check to see if there were deficiencies. And my payroll person and I used to have a game as if I could find the one she docked that, that week for missing a timeout or not. But that's the procedure I used and, uh, that's what I intend to use this coming year.
Thank you. That's very reassuring.
Okay, if there are no further questions, I would like to move on a little bit.
I think there's some hands up.
Oh, Carl.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure who I'm directing this question to, but I, I just wanted to go back when we were talking about the special revenue funds and how they were in, uh, in deficit and how they would be restored. I, I just want to go back to what was established in our last two meetings was that each of the fiscal years that were reviewed, uh, there, the budget was not overspent, uh, for the year. And various accounts read, uh, in the black, various red, uh, in the red. So I'm, if you were to zero all those out and, and, and have, um, essentially spent your budget, would, in, if, if you did that exercise, would you risk, in effect, have restored those balances in the special revenue accounts? So for instance, in building maintenance, if you didn't fully expend the monies, budgeted there, had money left over and moved it back at the end of the fiscal year to a special revenue account, as an example, uh, that had been overspent to a deficit, would, would that cure the issue? Or, uh, am I missing something about special revenue accounts that somebody should tell me about?
Well, I'll answer part of the question. Somebody else could jump in. The special revenue accounts are separate from the budget. So conceptually, what you said, if there was money at the, the total budget had any money left over and, and it did in twenty thousand twenty and there were some monies that were transferred to address some of those deficits, but since they're totally separate funds from budget, you'd have to be able to surplus to be able to, we're going to twenty, I forget the specific numbers, and I think it was actually four hundred thousand was moved out of the budget to address some of the deficits. So it's in fiscal twenty. If you look at page seventy-four in, in the report, it'll show you these transfers in. And I think with that really.
Mr. Santifani, do you know when in, in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, when that, or I'm sorry, nineteen twenty, when that was moved at four hundred thousand?
It was some, some, I don't know physically if, when it was moved, but from an accounting perspective, it was recorded as of June thirty twenty. So it was charged against the twenty budget to address the deficits. So effectively, it's recorded as of June of twenty.
So are, are you sort of saying that, um, when special revenue monies are moved to a budget expense line item or to cover a, a, an expense line item, that's not really appropriate? You shouldn't mix fruit, so to speak.
Well, it, the issue is more just not overspending because some of these special revenue funds have a revenue source. So they have revenue that comes in. It's just some, some cases, they may not have enough revenue to cover all the costs that are being char, being charged. So, so drivers add generates revenue, but then there's an expense. So the guidance testing revenue. The recommendation is just that you don't, don't spend more than the revenue. Then unless there is equity in order available to do that.
I think the most straightforward example of that, Mr. Masaro, is the, like, the band and strings, uh, account. It's one of the special revenue accounts where, uh, obviously we collect a participation fee from families for their, uh, elementary children to take. obviously we collect a participation fee from families for their elementary children to take orchestra or PAM. But it actually costs more to deliver that program than what we collect in participation fees. And I think the practice has been to allocate all of those expenses to the special revenue account, and so it ends up in deficit. So I think one of the things we probably are going to have to look at is to reflect some of those costs in our operating budget and only allocate to the Band and Strings program, what we collect participation fees to pay for. Is that, is that fair, Paul? Fair statement.
It is. And in our, I know he's trying to unmute there.
That's, that's how we had constructed the 2122 budget. And I know the board has further discussions on how we're going to treat those special revenue funds, especially the strings and also the inter-district.
Right, because keep in mind, those, those expenses can go up each year because a lot of them are connected to staff. And so as staff costs go up, you have to keep increasing either your operational budget or what you're taking in into the special revenue accounts, but you have to account for it. So we did try to, we used three years' worth of kind of actuals to make some determinations about what we thought was the right amount to put into the operational budget for next year. And again, that's to cover what we anticipate would, would simply keep everything at neutral, at net zero, but not to cover former deficits, because again, that would be a lot more money.
Thank you, Carl. Lainey McQ. Lainey, do you have a question?
I do. Thank you. Hi, Lainey McQ, Board of Finance. I, I just, I think there's a couple of things to keep in mind with the special agency accounts. On the town side, we have things like the police special agency account that we charge back for roadside jobs. We charge back for use of the cars. There's an anticipated amount that we charge back every year and we have a little bit of wiggle room whether we charge for, you know, one vehicle or two vehicles based on the use of that account. At one point, the town had neglected to draw from that account, so there was a large surplus. And we made a one-time decision or it was a one-time decision was made prior to my being on the board that they were going to take a larger sum out to make up for some of the revenue that hadn't been there, which took that special agency account down. I think if you look historically, the, the whole special revenue account for the lunch money, the, what they were doing was it was supposed to be there so that Betty Sinko could replace equipment as needed. And I, I don't think that it was really understood what was happening until they went to buy a new freezer for Tashua and, and parents had to come up with fundraising to pay for the freezer because that money wasn't there. So I think that as you look at that, what, what's really important is to, is that these discussions happen in public at the board level. And I think that's part of what's been missing as far as that. The other thing is in talking about payroll and HR, you know, from, from the perspective of, is this a good time for us to really be exploring, you know, a combination of services between the town and the Board of Ed? Is there a better way, a more efficient way that we could be doing it where there's better oversight? Can we be offering that rather than just adding staff here and there? Is there, is this a time to look for those efficiencies? So I would kind of think about that as we move forward with our discussions, that this is an opportunity for us to work together very closely. You know, to make sure that, one, these situations don't arise in the future and two, that, that we're looking for efficiencies that we've talked about for years. So that would just be my two cents with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lainey. Anyone else? I see nobody's hands up.
Mr. Chairman, it's Vicki Tesoro for Selectmen.
Yes, you were going to be my next, my next statement. I was going to say, welcome, Mrs. Tesoro. I know you were at another meeting with the PTSA this evening and welcome to our meeting. I'm glad you could stop in. Do you have any comments?
Uh, no, I'm just listening along with the conversation. I just wanted to follow up on Lainey's last statement about shared services. You know, we've had in our, had some ongoing discussions last year about shared services. We are still engaged in those similar conversations with the Board of Education about shared services, though it's not, it's not an issue that has disappeared. I don't want anyone to think that it has. It's a complex issue, but I believe it's one that needs to be explored. I testified last year up at the Hartford when they were talking about regionalization of, of school systems. And I spoke against that for a district like Trumbull, but what I did say is that the state legislature needs to have discussions about regionalization right within our towns between our Board of Educations and our town, our town government as well to share services and to make that an easier path to, to, to make that work because it is complex. But I just wanted to follow up with Lainey's comments that there are, there are, there will be ongoing discussions about that.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on in our discussion. We brought up the, the Gibson Report. And, and the point to that, it was brought up by one of our, our town council members. Back in 2012, we had a similar auditing, review, whatever you wanted to call it. And there were recommendations and I don't know how many of you had the opportunity to really see this, but on page two, the response from the Board of Education at the time in 2013, they prioritized the, the recommendations. Now, there were fewer recommendations, certainly, but they, you know, numbered them. One was a top priority. Two, they were definitely considering. Three, they were already engaged in doing. And four, they declined to initiate that recommendation because of concerns. And so I'm wondering, you know, Dr. Samuel, are you, you know, we asked the, the auditor, his priorities, have you and, and Paul and the board sat down with, with your priorities? I know things have already been put into place. And if you could give us an example or two, that would be great. They may be the easy things to put into place and that's fine. It might not be the, the number one priority, but they were quick and easy to, to, to put into effect without you know, undermining the current budget or without impacting any, anything or anyone. But do you have your own, based on, on the findings, your own list of priorities?
We, we, we are starting that work. We did want to hear from Joe tonight and we've been listening in to the conversations, you know, as, as you guys have been meeting and discussing, but we did want to make sure that specific question was asked and answered tonight for us. So we, we have Joe's response tonight, which we appreciate. And there's a few things that we had identified on our own before we ever even saw the report. You know, we saw this on January 4th, I think. So there was a few things we already took care of, like I think one of the recommendations was about using three years' actuals to help develop your budget. And that is something that Paul and I always do when we develop a budget. It's, it's just good practice to use a history. So that's something we've done. When we first came here, we also noticed that there was credit cards being used in the district and I'm just afraid of credit cards when they're used in a, in a school district, just because you always hear stories. You hear enough stories and you just have to make sure there's controls around that. So we'd already met to talk about credit card control.
Also, we reduced the number of credit cards from five to two, one of which is maintained in my office under lock and key.
But we, we were happy to know that the, our accounts person was doing an excellent, excellent job keeping track of the bills. But at the same time, you know, things can happen and you can, you, you can lose that control. So we've significantly reduced that. The special revenue funds were something that we heard about and were paying attention to before we even started our first day on the job. And we needed, we, we looked at that carefully and which is why we knew to put in our budget a certain amount of money to cover the expected cost. So that's another thing we, we had taken care of. Paul, are there other items that you know, your office that have already been checked off?
A couple, a couple, with regards to taking out loans, I was surprised that the Board of Ed had been taking out loans. When I worked in Ridgefield, we went through the first selectman's office for loans for technology each year, had that executed right at the start of the fiscal year so technology could make their purchases. So I went out to Mr. Santafani, as a matter of fact, and asked, is this the right way to do it? And he came back and said, no, well, the TD loan, no. And so we're working on creating a loan that would list the town as the obligor, but have an MOU between the Board of Ed and the town and the Board of Ed would make payments as, as it should be. We're, our contact at the Bank of America asked us to wait until February because of year-end problems, not problems, the year-end workload. We also reflected the debt service in the budget statements as Mr. Santafani recommended. We're having ongoing conversations with the town's purchasing department to make sure we understand those policies completely. And also probably make a template for all Board of Education employees basically purchasing for dummies. Follow this, 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 this. And there has to be at least one or two more transfers. We will do transfers probably starting next month. I most likely, I, I'd like to have six or seven months under the, under my belt before I decide whether to make transfers because I don't want to make a, a load of transfers each month because it kind of gums up the works. So you don't understand where the accounts really are until you have a track record. When you start transferring back and forth, you kind of cloud the picture. And we're working on other things, but those are the main ones so far.
Right, but one last thing that we've also done is we, we agree that one of the recommendations was to make sure the finance and operations of the Board of Education was seeing the grant funds and special revenue funds. And so that is something that, that Paul's been doing.
Well, it also, also I believe my predecessor was doing that. It just, there was a gap there of, of a couple. And also posting those to, to the town to make sure that everybody in town has visibility to them.
So our, our bottom line is we're going to go, we're going to be going back and providing information on each of these recommendations, but we do want to, we, we can go back now and after tonight's meeting and really shore up that list of recommendations and then schedule out when we anticipate trying to accomplish them. And like I said, reporting to the board publicly at our, our meetings where we are. And where we're either getting stuck on a particular recommendation, although I don't anticipate that much because I think these are all manageable and, and do, so we'll be reporting out each month as we go. So anybody who's watching and following along can see that. And then those, those reports generally get, I would, I would say they'd be part of our budget pack, I mean, our board packet. So it would be a public document as well.
That sounds wonderful. And on behalf of the committee, I certainly appreciate your candidness with this and your taking the initiative before you even saw the report. That's, you should be congratulated for, for your work. Could we, if I was to suggest another meeting, say in March, end of March, April, do you think we could have a status report at that time of, you know, just an update? I, I understand month to month through the Board of Ed presentation, but something that we could discuss more, more specifically.
Yeah, I mean, I think probably April is, April might be more likely in terms of there's a lot of work to be done right now. And so want to make sure that it's a, a conversation that's worth having for everybody's time.
Correct.
April would make more sense, but I, I think, I think I'm certainly seeing this in the spirit that you suggested at the beginning where we need to work together. I mean, this is taxpayer money. And it, there should be confidence around taxpayer money. And one, one thing that I've seen from all this is that from my perspective, the Board of Ed has not been overfunded in any sense of the imagination, i- if anything. They've had to do some stuff with some of their special revenue accounts because they were trying to keep the programs that parents really appreciate moving forward. Was it the right way necessarily? And I wasn't here, so I can't speak from an authority position there, but was it the right way? Probably not. They probably needed to make some hard decisions and make some cuts and say, no, this is real. But it definitely shows that the Board of Education is not overfunded. And if anything, it's, it is underfunded based on what we're trying to accomplish with the students. Which I know is appreciated by Trumbull residents. I hear all the time how much people appreciate or have moved into Trumbull because of the school system. So so I would say April to answer, to answer your original question.
That sounds great. I, I think that's fantastic. I think that's great. So really, as far as the agenda goes, we've, we've sort of tackled the status of the recommendations and the plan and the timeline moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the first selectman had her hand up.
Okay, I'm sorry, this is, this is Tesoro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's Vicki Tesoro for Selectmen. You know, I don't want to get into discussions about underfunding and, and, or overfunding budgets. I think that's a blanket statement to make at a meeting like this. I think it was discovered by this audit that there was definitely budgets that were overspent and not managed properly. I'm not saying that there was malfeasance. I, I will not contradict the auditor. But I don't think there was proper management and I don't think we should get, make statements at this meeting about budgets that were underfunded. I, I'm just not sure we have that information in front of us. We, I could pull up all the funding that's gone on to the Board of Education for the last six or seven years. I have that information where there was certainly underfunding in, in budgets in, and I will say it previously to my administration. So I do have to defend my, my own allocations to the Board of Education. I just want to make that clear.
Thank you. Okay. I would like to make him, have someone make a motion for resolution TC 28, Mrs. Ornstein. Would you be so kind?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. I'm one second. Okay, is this today? Yeah, no. Sorry, I'm, I.
It's okay. We haven't had resolution yet, so.
I just need to find it. Sorry. Oh, here it is. TC 28 dash 147?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. TC 20, 28 dash 147, be it resolved that the Town of Trumbull Education Department operation will review for the fiscal year 2018, 2019, and 2020 is hereby accepted.
And may I have a second?
Kevin Chively, I'll second that.
Discussion. Seeing as there's no discussion.
Mr. Whitmore, it's Scott. I don't know if it's appropriate for me to comment.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I just, you did note at the, the beginning of the meeting that you'd asked Mr. Santafani to make some of the corrections. And to get a final version of the report. So I didn't know whether you wanted to accept it in its current form.
We could have an amendment.
I'll make that amendment. So I'll make the amendment that we accept the report as amended by Ms. So I'll make the amendment that we accept the report as amended by Miss as will be amended by Mr. Santafani.
Okay, second.
Second, Mike Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Discussion.
Do we have a timeframe for that?
I've asked that it be done this week and be delivered by Friday. Just so we have proof that it's been done and we can vote on it on Monday night. I'll distribute it to to.
Well, given that, Mr. Chairman, Kevin Chively, again, given that, is is it more appropriate for us to? To has it without, I mean, I guess. Because we're we're basically, I mean, and we're voting on something that hasn't been presented to us, right? So it's, I mean, I, we we can assume that all the corrections will be made.
Right, the corrections would be made. It would not affect the findings. It's just, you know.
I just want to make sure I understand what I'm voting on.
I mean, if you would prefer to.
On correcting typos, really.
Right, right. No, I get that.
May I make a suggestion? You could pass it without recommendation.
That's what I was kind of, that's the direction I was heading.
I would have to agree with that. I I would feel uncomfortable voting on something that I haven't seen the final draft or the final version for. So my suggestion would also be to pass it without recommendation at this stage.
Agreed.
Thank you. So the motion's been made. It's been seconded by Mrs. Schwartz.
Any for? Pass without recommendation. Is that the that the motion? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do I have unanimous consent to pass without recommendation?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, okay. So move the the operational review will be passed to the council without recommendation pending. Type of, yeah, editing. Okay, I'll get it out. Auditing, editing. Okay, I want to thank everybody. I think this has been a tremendously positive meeting. Special thanks to Dr. Semmel and and Mr. Hendrickson for your time, to the Board of Ed. The questions tonight were tremendously. And brought a lot of discussion to the table. I want to thank Mr. Santafanti for being able to to give us some fantastic answers with that and direct us through the report. And I have nothing further, so I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Done, moved.
Second, second, this is Ornstein. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time this evening. Take care.
Thank you.